Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:30, and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council to order. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuha?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Laoco?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here. Thank you. Before we move on to approval of the minutes, I would imagine most people notice that we have some food items out here on the table, and these are items being provided by members of the city council for our two food banks, one which is right across the street over by 106 Water Street, and the other one is down near Mel Harder Park. And it's been my experience over the last few months that I routinely see families, not just individuals, but families stopping in there to acquire some much-needed food items. So if anybody who's watching or hearing tonight wants to contribute, they're always open. And primarily, Heather, you can talk about what items are best received in there.
Sure. So the little free food pantries are, if you haven't seen them, they're up on a post, and so they're small. They actually hold quite a bit, but we ask for items in there that are non-perishable, things that could make a meal. Hygiene items are great, cleaning items, too. Those are all things, things that are kind of expensive. I know when I go to the grocery store, I just get a couple extra of what I'm already getting for myself and put them in there. And we generally find that they get filled up one day, and the next day, they're mostly empty. And because the one is right across from City Hall, if you're over here, you can see people stopping at them all the time. So one of the great things about the little free food pantries is there's no stigma attached. You can leave what you, you know, people can leave things, people can pick things up, and they're available 24 hours a day.
Second one is?
Second one is in the parking lot from Mel Harder Park.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for everyone's contribution to the food pantries.
Chris, I want to mention that this Saturday, and in fact, they do it once a month, there's a free food distribution that occurs at Celebration Lutheran Church on Saturday morning, and that they have fresh fruits and vegetables and things of that nature. Again, it's totally free. I think there is some registration involved, but I think it'd go pretty quickly, but that's just another source for people to obtain free, fresh food.
That's out on Wilson Mills?
It's on Auburn and just north of Route 6, sort of across the street from the Echec facility.
Good. Thank you, Andy. Okay, moving on. Amy, oh, let's see, approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from September 8?
Mayor, I gave one small correction on the manager's report with this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 bullet down, just a clarification of what I was saying regarding salaries. I asked Amy to strike the words "more than," so the sentence would read. He noted that council may be asked to be more aggressive with salaries instead of setting them at an average level, as has historically been done.
Very good. You have that, Amy?
Yes.
Any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented, as amended?
No move.
Second?
No move and seconded. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes. Thank you. We're moving on to manager's report, but just prior to that, we have a young man here tonight, Elliot Miller, who was sitting in the front row. And over the last many months, Elliot has been a recognized artist here in the city, primarily for his work on murals. I'm sure many of you saw and many of you know that he was first-rate in the mural he provided right across the street on the wall facing the back of Main Street, and he did a great job on that. And then he moved on to the subsequent wall around the other side that faces our station where there's electric charging stations for cars. And he's been working on that with various people over the last few months, and it's now complete. We do have, printout, everyone up here has it, and I'd be glad to provide this around the room. But Elliot, you did a remarkable job, and we're very, very proud of you, and we want to also give you something. But Heather, do you want to say anything more about his work?
I do want to say something. So I've gotten to know Elliot over the whole summer. We've been together out there, for better, for worse, sometimes. I asked Elliot in the beginning how, you know, kind of like how he likes to work, and he's like, well, I like it when it's quiet. But when I was out there, it wasn't always quiet. But we, the second mural that Elliot just finished, that is one, if you haven't seen it, it says, "Welcome to Historic Chardon." It's in a space that really, it really just, it's a great, it's a great addition to that space. And that was completely his, like, his vision, and he did that completely as a give-back to the community. So he didn't get paid to do it. He did it as a favor, really, and it's been really great getting to know you over the summer. So I'm sure this is not the last that we're going to see of Elliot, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for doing that for us.
Yeah, thank you. Come on up here, Elliot, one second. So we know you like painting, so we got you a gift certificate for Sherwin-Williams. Does the VFW need anything painted?
Yes.
All right. Thank you once again, Elliot. And moving on to manager's report, agenda item number five. Randy?
Thank you. To start out tonight, we want to talk about the residential curbside trash collection program. Of course, it's always a successful program. It was held on Saturday, September 24th. There were 24 loads of trash that were collected, which totaled 83.77 tons. The 10-year average for the number of loads from 2013 through 2022 was 21.5, so we were slightly under, and the average tonnage collected is 102.24, so we're slightly under that as well. So we'll watch and see if it trends and continues to go down. I know the residents really enjoy it, and it's, right now, it's part of our waste management agreement, and they do a great job blasting out the community early on Saturday morning. So we'll continue to do it and see what happens here. Second, Dan Lane has been hired as a second-shift maintenance worker in the Division of Water and Sewer, and his tentative start dates October 24th, so we're welcoming to him. We did receive five applications for the position of maintenance worker in the Division of Streets, Cemeteries, and Parks. Interviews are ongoing. Right now, I believe some have been conducted, and they'll be finishing up soon, so we can keep moving on that and get somebody on board. Chardon Square Association will be working with Mike Butt, our Lambs and Building Supervisor, to create a native plant butterfly garden right across the street at 106. It's underneath the Backstage Studio Thrive sign that's up there. That section will be turned into a nice garden with perennial plants that will attract butterflies and be a nice addition to that building. CSA, Chardon Square Association, will work with providing the plants, and they already have a schematic of where the different kinds will go, so we're looking forward to seeing that come to fruition with Mike. This bulletin, I respectfully request that council pass a motion to allow for a timeframe of a month more to submit the 2023-2027 capital improvement plan, so until the meeting next month. I would appreciate it. It's been a very challenging year. Our new finance director is knee, more than knee-deep in it and has discovered it's a very complex and very, 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 very detailed document. That, coupled with the challenge of the inflationary pressures that have caused all the costs of our projects and our machinery and equipment to skyrocket, has added a additional layer of complexity to this comprehensive plan that we're working on. We're in the final hours of finishing it up at this point in time, and I just want to give one example. This is the, probably the worst example, if you will. The State Route resurfacing project, Route 6 and State Route 44, as you know, the state comes in pretty much every 20 years or so and does their resurfacing. We get the benefit of having them come in when the prices are probably going to be the highest that they've been and will be, but we have to deal with that. So last year, in the capital improvement plan, the 2022-2026 plan, we had a total projected cost of $2,939,000. This year, the cost is projected at $5,136,326. That's not all just from the increases. It's also a little increase in scope as we're finding out more and more what they will and will not do. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, they do not cover any of the full-depth repairs, and they do not cover any of the curb removal and replacement. So I think around $500,000 of the addition is those two items alone, and we're not done. I'm not going to be surprised if the local share goes up even more on that project. That's about a 74.76 increase in that project, just from one year to the next. So that's just an example of what we're trying to handle. You'll see that there are multiple projects that have been either pushed back or pushed off of the five-year plan when we present it in order to accommodate these kinds of things. That's one of the main ones. The other main one is the Wilson Mills Park Avenue Realignment Project. That's a large one also that has increased greatly in cost. And then, of course, adding on the settlement agreement with the county commissioners for the up to $2 million for the city's portion of that project. So all those things coupled together have made this challenging, to say the least. So I would appreciate a motion, long-winded way to say, I would appreciate a motion to give us another month to finish up the capital improvement plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Did you get the full motion on it?
Yes. I lost that one additionally.
All right. Very good.
Thank you. Moving on, you may have noticed that the different trailheads throughout town, that there's been some work going on on the east sides of them, and that is our street guys, along with Adam from Park and Rec, that are working on doing the installation of the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons, the RRFBs, saving the city a substantial amount of money rather than having them installed by others. The city is doing that themselves, and I think all three of them are going to be up and running, and so therefore then all the four crossings will be the same with the RRFBs, which is the push-button, blinky, you know, wait-and-go. So we're thankful that we have the talent and staff to be able to do that. Just an announcement, Trick or Treat is on the Halloween Day, on the last day of the month of October. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 at night, and then at 7:30, as always, there's parade on the square, followed by cider and donuts in the Heritage House sponsored by the Police Department. And that's pretty much rain or shine. We've had some windy weather, but it pretty much goes. Moving on to the project updates, the Chardon Living Memorial Park Phase 2, construction is pretty much done, and right now, we're waiting on word of when the restroom will be trucked in and be craned into place. We thought it would be November, but we haven't heard definitively yet on that. The Center Street Sidewalk Infill Project, the comments have been addressed and revised plans, the estimate in the draft bid book have been submitted to ODOT, so we're waiting to hear back from them at this point in time. The Hidden Glen Water Main Loop, the application was submitted to OPWC for Round 37 fiscal year '24 with a request of $250,000 grant and $150,000 20-year loan at 0%. We're hopeful that that grant and loan will be successful for that project. That's also one that we're using half of the ARPA money on as well, the first allocation that we had of the ARPA money. And then, last on the update of the projects is the 7th Avenue Repair Widening and Extension Program. This is another OPWC, partially funded program by a grant and loan. The amount of the grant on this one was $400,000. The loan is $278,700, and the project is slated to be advertised either at the end of this year or the beginning of '23, with the construction early of 2023. So this is for that whole intersection to be revamped and fixed. I mean, if you've been up there, it needs it, and also for the extension pushing all the way through to Industrial Park. So that'll be a welcome improvement when we get that one done. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Moving on to agenda item number six, Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Short report. We had no meeting in September, nothing to report.
Makes it easy.
Pass it on, Steve.
We're also going to hear a third-quarter economic development report from Steve.
Good evening. As always, there has been the last numerous several quarters, we've been pretty busy. Had several business openings. Chardon Integrated Wellness Center moved into Woodyboro Gables down on South Street. Patterns Behavioral Service moved in to the old E2B Technologies Building on 5th Avenue. They took over about half, roughly half of that building, so there's still half of the building left for a new tenant as well. Spirit Halloween has moved in, out for, at least for a couple months, out on Meadowlands Drive. I've been told by them that Chardon is one of their highest-performing stores, so they were glad to be able to find another space to come back. So IS Squared, we've talked about in the past, they have gotten their occupancy permit for the entire third floor, and they're in the process of ramping up and hiring staff as they begin moving their operations, or at least portion of their operations here from California. Leaps and Sounds Rehabilitation, right here next door to us, moved into the old White Barn, part of the old White Barn space. Simple Keeping Accounting moved in to the tenant space up on Main Street that's behind Moments and Memories Travel and the Chamber of Commerce in that building. Couple, just a couple other things that are ongoing. Thistle Creek is continuing on. I believe at this point, there's eight homes that are currently under construction, and one has been completed. At this point, I think there's four or five that have been completed, and there's five or six, or four or five that are still under construction. Redwood Apartments, I don't know if anybody's been back there, they've got four buildings, walls and roofs up. They've started siding and doors and windows on the first couple buildings, and then they've got, they should be, they're doing the foundation work for the second group of four, which is their second pod, and the paperwork for the third pod just came in earlier this week. So they're moving right along. Probably, probably very end of the year, early next year will be when we'll start seeing some of those units become available. A lot of expansions are growing on and renovations. 113 Brewing is renovating a space over on Cherry Avenue. They haven't given me a completion date for that. Marcy's Hair in the Square and Squared Up, Barber Shop have done a complete renovation of that space. Tractor Supply has done an interior renovation. One that's almost completed now is, well, it's now called Chardon Auto Spa. It used to be Hilltop or Auto Wash. If you haven't been back there, you'll probably be shocked at the difference in that building. They've redone all the concrete work around the building, they've redone the siding and the roof, everything. Much, significant investment in that property has been done here in the last month or two. Chardon Physical Therapy is moving into the other tenant space that was previously vacated by E2B Technology across the street from them. We're still working with Maple Trace for Phase 1, trying to get them to the point of pre-construction meeting, possibly doing some earthwork yet this year if time allows. Beving &amp; Dahl on 5th Avenue, that's next to Ayrshire, that's a new commercial, or new industrial building. They're plugging along also, probably, possibly breaking ground here end of, very end of October, early November. So with that, that's kind of what's going on. Zoning Code Amendment, that's been on here for quite a while. Hopefully, Christine Hopkins has been out of the office for several weeks, hoping to get back with her in this fall or into early winter, hopefully to start those joint Planning Commission Council meetings so we can get that project wrapped up.
Multiple meetings?
As few as possible.
The first page that you have, Simple Keeping, what is that business?
It's an accounting office.
All right. Good report, Steve. Any questions for Steve? All right. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, Council Committee Reports. Service Committee. Dave?
Service Committee met on Thursday, September 15th of this year, obviously. First thing on the agenda that came out of that meeting was short court resurfacing in conjunction with the 2024 State Route Resurfacing Project. I know you, we all received additional information regarding short court, and I'll address that in a second. The question that was posed to us was, do we want to repave short court in the 2024 project? Debbie and I are recommending that we do it as an ad alternate because that gives us the option to see what's going on in a couple of years and trying to guess today. So our recommendation to council is make, as I said, as an ad alternate, and then we'll have a chance to address it again closer to the project. Just, bottom line, it buys us time to see what we want to do. So I think, Randy, you want a motion to that effect? To add as an ad alternate?
Yeah, that would be fine. Let me make it a proposal.
We just review what your, the definition of ad alternate is providing.
It'll be put on the, in the bid as an ad alternate. In other words, as a, an item that we can either go with or delete. We'll have the choice whether we want to have it performed or not at the time. So we'll get a price to do the job, and then we'll be able to decide whether we want to proceed or not.
Just to clarify, that is just for the asphalt resurfacing only?
Correct.
Not the, not the, attached to this, public may not know this, but attached to this is information regarding turning short court into a more of a public space, as was recommended in the Chardon Tomorrow Vision for Chardon that the city adopted some years ago. Now, that, I don't think, Randy, that project is not currently in the capital budget, right?
No, it really hasn't been defined either.
Right.
That's where this was kind of the germinating from, was do, does council want to instruct staff to start working on that and looking for grant or starting the process of having an architect come in and start those conversations or not? Or just go ahead and do the asphalt in '24 and figure, okay, it's still going to take five, 10, 15, 20 years till anything changes on short court?
Do you want that motion now, then, and then you want to proceed with further discussion of what Andy just referenced?
Yes.
So is there a motion for resurfacing the short court in 2024 under the description of ad alternate?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
And as Randy mentioned just a little bit ago, this would be another one of those parts of that state project that the city pays the whole thing. They will not pay for short court. Now, as far as all the attachments goes, we started talking about this, I think council needs to decide when and how we want to start looking at the square, ideas such as the short court, when to change. Any other, and I'd suggest any other items, we may want to talk about the square to see, to instruct staff to start looking at some of this because it takes a long time. So I'm just, the question simply is, council needs to start thinking, when do we want to really seriously address some of these questions on the square?
Well, I'll start off. I mean, I obviously support a project like this, something of this nature, but it occurs to me that whatever we do there is going to have to be integrated with what is going to happen at the courthouse, and we know nothing about that right now. So I fully support us doing something to make that a more usable public space at some point in the future, and it could be tied into what's going on at the courthouse. We just don't know at this point. So I don't know that we need, personally, I don't know that we need to make a decision about this this evening.
Oh, I wasn't looking for a decision on that tonight. It's just put in everybody's mind that we ought to start considering when we want to talk about some of this. And, you know, and Andy's absolutely right, with the courthouse project coming, that's another reason for this ad alternate. We'll have a better idea what to expect at that time. Plus, we have questions, you know, if you take out that parking, those parking stalls, that's where the apartments they could park, okay, where are we going to put them? So there's a lot.
So would the ad alternate cost, let's say, go ahead and accept it, and we decide to pave it, would that can be part of our $2 million contribution?
No. No? Why not? It's towards their project, not towards our.
In front of their, okay. Trying.
I was going to say, good try, good try.
Well, are you looking for, I know we're not making a final decision, but if that is in the next, let's say, 10 years, a rehaul of short court into this more public space that can be used for a variety of different reasons, what would be the next step on, without, can we, can we start next steps without spending money on that?
Well, you have, I mean, you have, the Chardon Tomorrow thing didn't cost anything, but realistically, to go much further, one of the first steps would have been a traffic study, and that obviously is going to cost money. And again, you probably are going to want to wait until you have some idea. Traffic studies are usually, you try to predicate on what the opening timeframe is going to be when you do your study, since we don't know that yet. I mean, we could do a traffic study based on current traffic and have our traffic engineer do an analysis and say, here's what the impact would be of closing off short court to through traffic.
Plus, there's the school and that traffic in the morning when they're in school, because a lot of those come straight up Goodrich, and they cross across and use short court. So I think the traffic study would need to look at what the impact would be on the intersection of East Park and North Hampton. How far might that back up in the morning when they're doing that, you know, whole thing?
To answer your question, yes, money's involved.
Another thought I had, councilman, was that when we're ready, the city could apply for a TLCI grant from Nuwaka, and they pay for a lot of the planning study, and they would partner with the city to do a planning study on what it could look like and do the public meetings and things like that as part of that planning study. So some year, we could go after that.
All right. Interesting concept, and we'll move on from that tonight, but.
I think it's just, it's a topic for a future discussion that we should plan for.
Fair enough. And there's a lot of moving parts. We don't know what the library's going to do. We don't know what, just a lot of things involved there.
The library parking area has been postponed as of now in the capital improvement plan, just heads up.
What about the additional parking on East Park?
That's what he's. That's what I mean.
Oh, you meant that, too, lot there? I thought you.
We had it being engineered, I think, in '26 last year. We had it being engineered, I think, in '26 last year, but this year you just pushed it off.
I thought you were talking about the school and the library.
Yeah, in front of the library, yeah.
Okay.
On East Park.
There's a lot of moving.
Yeah.
Right, and if everything moves, then we'll have to move accordingly somehow if we can.
My guess is short court's going to get repaved in two years, so.
But I just wanted to make sure council was aware that this was an opportunity if they want.
Okay. Another item.
Tell you one question, that 60-plus thousand, that reflects increases between now and 2024?
It does.
Okay.
All right. Another item we talked about was the, and Debbie, chip, if I'm missing something, please speak up, okay? Removal of the loading zone at the southwest corner of Main Street, basically what, in front of what's known as Antique Summer Square. And you have a picture? It would increase parking by two spots. Granted, it will be kind of difficult to get out of there, but no different than in front of, on South Street. So our recommendation, and this was brought to us by the owners, or Chardon Squares.
Well, it was business owners, right? And then, and then owners were fully supportive of it.
So that service committee recommends that that be approved. Well, no, we're recommending that the law director be given the task of creating the proper legislation to make that happen because these, these parking zones are created by ordinance, right?
So what's the process then? So Ben?
He'll come back to us if we ask him to at the next meeting for official legislation to make it happen.
That is correct.
So it's still a couple of months from actually getting done, it sounds like.
Oh, the ordinance will take not very long, and then if you want to pass it as an emergency, you can pass it as an emergency, and it could take effect immediately. Or you can put it on three readings and wait 30 days and delay the process. You guys get to make that choice.
Weather could make.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Maybe preferable just to wait till spring.
Oh, government.
It would be, yeah, we're running out of weather, warm weather to paint.
Okay. So will we, so somebody make a motion to direct the law director?
Do you need a motion, Ben?
I, I think I understand the task.
All right. Another item we discussed in the last one I'm going to bring up is we wanted to emphasize, and this, this is a result of the repaving of Cedar Glen in the Woods of Burlington, the importance of the city either themselves or the contractors continuing to use door drops as notification, of the means of notification on projects. In other words, do not rely solely on social media. I know everybody laughs at me with my comments regarding computers and that type of thing, but through experience and with residents just on my street recently, it is an important addition to do those drops because everyone does not look at their computers every day or go on Facebook or go on a homeowners association website. They like to see it at their door. So that's all we were trying to do is emphasize the need to continue that and not get too caught up in the social media world. That's all.
Paul, what's our current practice? I think we go over this every once in a while.
Yeah, we, in the meeting, we presented a list of at least a dozen means that we use depending on the situation to notify the public of which door drops are a part and of which social media is a part as of signs and, and what have you. It's a combination effort between the city and the contractor. There are certain things that are written into the general conditions of the contract that require certain types of notification. So as we discussed at the committee meeting, the, the door drops are one of the tools in the arsenal that we use.
Okay. And that's by the contractor or?
Both.
Both.
But we, during, during the course of a project, the project site is, it's still our property, but it's their job site. So we rely on them to have the manpower and notification because we're not monitoring their schedule on a daily, hourly basis like they are. So things change, and we rely on them to keep us informed and the residents and or business owners.
You have to keep in mind that the average citizen, they'll see a sign that says, road resurfacing begins tomorrow, and in our case, that was taking off the top a couple inches, whatever. Well, then I had a lady call me, and she says, well, Dave, that means I'll start paving the next day, so I should cancel all my plans to leave my home, right? No. I mean, we know that, but average citizen doesn't. So they just need as much information as they can get, knowing that things change due to weather, other issues come up, but, so, okay, that, Debbie, anything else can you think of from the meeting?
No, I think that was our main topics.
Before we move on, I want to thank Sarah and, and Ryan Culture for the investment that they're putting on Main Street. There have been two new businesses opened up under their guidance with the renovation. I was in the upstairs today at the new dress shop, and there was a ribbon cutting yesterday, so thanks for handling that, and it's, it's fantastic up there. It really is beautiful. So Sarah and Ryan are doing a great job on Main Street, and we appreciate that. All right, anything else for Dave or Debbie?
Oh, we did not have an opportunity to go down to the cemetery like we had hoped due to wet weather. So we'll, we'll still try to get that in this fall.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number eight, hearing of persons before council. Tonight, we have Gene Chapman and Bill Richardson here. Gentlemen, come on up to the podium. They're from the VFW, and they're requesting permission for memorial veteran banners to be hung around the city. We've supplied with multiple pages of descriptions and or email transactions, but gentlemen, why don't you give us the overview of what you're looking at from, what you need from the city?
Well, we just need you to take control of it and do it, that's all. No, we have started, done some of the legwork in our research, looking at cities of Painesville, Mener, Willowick, Wickliffe, Alliance, was there any others down in Fort?
Streetsboro, Ravenna.
Streetsboro, Ravenna. The cities pretty much did all the, they did everything. We wanted to get this started, get the approval on it, and if we need to work out logistics, if you guys want to take the ball on it and run, or if, you know, you feel we should do it, we could come up with something. But the plan is just for veterans to have their, you know, service noticed by the community.
Recognized.
Recognized. Some of the questions that, that we've kind of heard in a roundabout way, does the veteran have to be from the city of Chardon? Does a veteran have to be from, you know, 4402 zip code? Does the veteran have to be from Joga County? You know, when the draft was about, there was no discrimination as to where you lived or where you were from. You served your time, you were a veteran, you did what you had to do so that we can sit here tonight and be able to do what we want to do, go out tomorrow and do what we want to do. So as far as we're concerned, there is no discrimination. If someone wants to pay the money to have a banner put up around the square, around the city of Chardon, of their family member that was a veteran where they died in action, died two weeks ago or still living, it's, it's okay with us. There's not going to be any of that. As far as the number of, I did have a conversation with Mike Butt from the city. He did tell me there was 57 brackets put up back in 2012 for the bicentennial. Whether they're all still there, he's not sure. I know in my driving around, since that conversation, I think I've noticed five or six places that he had on his list that no longer have a bracket. As far as that goes, we've, you know, discussed that either the VFW and/or area businesses, Chamber of Commerce, whatever, we have some connections that we would purchase brackets and have them put up on the, I don't know, what you guys, do you call them light poles? Basically, it's the black poles where there's a traffic light. They could stay there year-round. If you guys wanted to use them, they'd be there for whatever you wanted to put up. As far as the time of the brackets being hung, we definitely wanted the month of May, and we were pushing for the month of November as well to coordinate with Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We did hear there was a little bit of, maybe not too sure as, as far as the city employees being up there at the end of November, middle of November, taking them down for weather. That's up to you guys, up to the employee, you know. We just felt that they were due that, the veterans were due that time. As far as the costs of banners, there would be no cost to the city. We have worked with Pro Vision Impressions in Painesville, who has worked with the city as far as already putting banners around the square. He knew what you guys had, so he knew the dimensions. I did give you a mock-up of what would be Bill's banner, so you can see what it looks like. There could be.
Don't go by that necessarily.
Yeah, that is actually Bill, back when he was 17.
Yeah.
So variations could be made as far as color or, you know, little less banner to top, well, the stars and stripes, little bigger picture, something to that effect. It gives you an idea. If any of you have driven through any of the other cities to do this, you, you see what we're talking about as well. Cost would be, he has given us a cost from Pro Vision, a break up through 24, from 25 on, there's a break in it. The only cost, I, I should refer back, the only cost to the city would be is if your employees putting them up, if you're taking care of that time to pay them while they're putting them up, or if that time gets pushed on to us if we're handling it. So we have come up, we have worked some figures with the assumption that you guys would handle your own employees' wages. It would be probably around maybe $50 to $70 for a banner. Now, you know, again, I think you guys were going to look into if there was any banner limits, any, anything in your bylaws, you know, regarding banners around the city, number of them, whatever, you know, we would have to get something like that because the way the applications would be put out, if we only can put up 45, the first 45 that come in with money, would be the ones that would be put up. At the end of the process of being taken down, the owner of the banner could take it back, store it, or we would hold on to it. We would hope this would be a yearly thing. And in that aspect, would we have to come, if this is approved, would we have to come back every year to have this approved, or can it be put to the vote that it would be a yearly occasion?
When we, I'm asking a question about the brackets.
Sure.
Because that's, if we, when we put the bicentennial banners up, that's when all the brackets were purchased before. Did we have any of the rules, like, like, where were they put? Were they put on poles now that we're not allowed to put things on?
I don't recall where they were, but I think most of them were on the square, on the poles on the square, not on the illuminating company's poles.
Correct.
That's, that's one thing is.
Yeah, right now.
Something else, and they said you can't put anything on our poles, so that was for the park.
Right.
We were looking.
Yeah. Mike did send me a list of where they were all at. Most of them are, you know, Center Street, Water Street.
Right.
South Street, I think, at the corners, down at Meadowlands by the plaza. That's where the majority of them are, around the square. And they all are, as far as I can see, they are all attached to the black signal poles, so.
I think from, from our veterans' perspective, I think it would say a lot to the residents and the veterans to see these banners hung in, in the city. Everyone that I know that's driven through some of these places that have the banners always comment. So look good for you guys, in my opinion, if you approve this. Some of the stuff Gene talks about can be hashed out after the approval's made, you know, whether it's 50 banners or 100. I'd like to see them on every phone pole you got in the city, if that would be possible. I don't know, but those are the kind of things that we could work out once it's approved or, or whatever. As far as cost goes, if, if the city would take it over, you could charge whatever you want. Gene's got the price of what it would cost, but you could charge 150, and if you look at some of these forms that you have, these cities charge, I'm sure to cover their cost of putting them up and doing, doing the clerical work and that sort of thing, so. But that's the kind of stuff we could work out, and we will obviously help as veterans. The VFW would help out, the American Legion would help out. I know quite a few business owners in the city that would be happy to help if, if need be. We'll give the police free breakfast if that's what it takes to get this done.
But, so we're asking for your approval, I guess. No, no family members, though.
No, no family members.
So just from our internal discussions, we are looking at May only.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So not into the.
I'd like to see it from May through November.
So would I.
That's what most of these have.
We have all the.
But most of these communities do.
Well, so one of the, so one of the things is that the banners, that allotment of banners right now, and I don't know if we can expand the brackets, I don't, like, I don't, I don't know that, are allotted for other things like the ones that are up now. So it wouldn't be 50, it would be a smaller number to start.
Mm-hmm.
I would think, too, if we're putting them up, I would be in favor of putting them up for the season, maybe not through November because of the weather, but I would be personally.
Certainly through Veterans Day.
Nobody talked to me about this beforehand, but I would be totally for that. I would not be for us being in charge of it as far as that, but we would have to do the, the labor for it. We absolutely would have to, like, if we were to agree to do it, it would not be you guys doing it, for sure. So.
Well, let me, let me jump in just with, council did pass a banner policy years ago now, just for 12 poles that we have identified for nonprofits to use to promote their events. Right now, they have the.
Think Local.
Think Local, and like, Live Well, the Think Local program.
Peace, love.
And they've been used for the.
Theater.
Thrive, and also for the promoting the market and promoting the concerts in the square. At that point, the policy calls for $50 per banner for installation and removal, for the city to take them up and put them down in a minimum of four banners per nonprofit. And I think it was really, without trying to see, I don't know how long, I think it was a, a short time period that they were allowed to be up pretty much like two weeks before their event, unless it was seasonal like the, the concert series or the market, and they could be up for that season. That's not to say that we can't do an inventory of all the intersections that we have, but I'm glad to hear what the concept is because usually I've seen, when I'm driving through the communities, it's, it's telephone pole after telephone pole after telephone pole, but you're saying that's not what you want, you want just.
Sure, we want.
The intersections.
Well, if we could have that, we could.
More.
Yeah, the modern area.
We would like them, but we just, we were under the assumption that illuminating, you know, poles belonged to the illuminating company, we wouldn't probably have permission to do that.
Well, when we did ask, like the councilman said before, they told us, no, they wouldn't approve anything. However, I mean, the city, on your behalf, I could call and say, I, these are all over other communities.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And they, they may say, I'm not going to give you a formal approval, however.
Right.
And then I think we'd be comfortable enough saying, okay, let's do it that way rather than just the intersections.
Mm-hmm.
I think it, it just gives a better.
Yes.
Splash presentation, if you will, if they're one after the other, rather than just at intersections. But I will have to say, I, I really don't want our guys out there after. But, I will have to say, I, I really don't want our guys out there after Veterans Day climbing up on ladders trying to take these things down. We can have horrible snow events in November.
You might have a day that's...
It's not, anything to do with Veterans Day, it's to do with the weather.
Yeah.
But, again, it's up to council, if council decides we do, but they may be up there through April, because we didn't get to them all winter long, and they may get destroyed as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know? If, if council decides that, that's what they'd like to do.
Can I address council real quick? Hi, my name's Doug Lundblad, I'm a Veteran Service Commissioner of Chautauqua County, also a...
Hey Doug, would you mind coming over near, near the microphone a little more? Thank you, sir.
My name's Doug Lundblad, I'm with the, I'm a Veteran Service Commissioner with, with the county, I'm also the Vice Junior Commander with the VFW and Service Officer. And I would like to make a recommendation that possibly we put these banners on the poles on the square just below the flags, and you can lower your flower baskets down just below the, where the banner would be.
Yeah. I don't...
And then you can keep them around the square on those poles, because I came through the square and I can see a pole every, you know, twenty, thirty feet, or whatever it is, and there's a U.S. flag on each of those poles. And you can put those banners just below the U.S. flag on those poles.
They'd be very low.
Uh...
They'd be within people being able to touch them.
How tall are those banners?
They're sixty inches, I think.
Five feet, yeah.
Yeah, that, you, you would be able to touch the banners, we, we don't want them, we don't want people to be able to touch them.
Or the flowers.
Or the flags, or the flags, or the flower baskets.
Five feet, yeah. Can't believe I just said that. Yeah, he would come down.
Yeah, all right, so we...
Or at the very least, I would, I would like council to at least heavily consider doing this around here, because I think, as a veteran myself, though we have, and speaking with Bill and the VFW and the Veteran Service Office, that we should have something like this in this city, because you can go from community to community and see this almost all year-round. And to have the younger people that are in this community walking through here and at least looking up and seeing a veteran, that could possibly encourage them to join the military themselves, and just to see the history of it, because it is nice to see as they're walking through the town all year-round. I think it's just a great location.
We recognize the importance, I don't think we're shying away from that, okay? We're just trying to get to some more specifics. We still have not identified how many poles or which poles. Randy, our city manager, may reach out to the utility companies to see if that's, that's an option, so you have to give us time on that, okay, guys?
Right.
And then, as far as the timing goes, I am concerned about the safety in, in the late fall, so is there a compromise here to put them up in, in May through the end of summer, for example, so that we can make sure that they go up and down in a, in an orderly fashion? And on top of that, as Randy indicated, at this point, we're not incurring the labor rate to put this signs up, so that would be back on VFW to include in your cost.
Well, I think...
And then, is that, is that a double, when you said fifty per sign or something along those lines? Is that up and down, or is that, so, how does that...
I think it's installation and removal is fifty dollars, so one, one time per banner.
One time fee.
Down the street on the, on the one...
Per year, yes.
Per ti, per year, yes.
Per year. So, that's...
So, it, so...
That was twenty-seventeen, so, but it's...
Yeah.
Low.
Well, let me point out that Gene's got the cost of the banner at seventy-five bucks, but the city could charge whatever you want to cover your cost of putting them up, taking them down.
Understood.
A lot of them are a hundred and fifty bucks.
We're not going to charge the individual purchaser, right, guys? So, you're, you would just, you would get an invoice from the city based on how many banners are going up and down, based on, the fifty is a two thousand and seventeen cost, so that's going to increase once more, you know, who knows where that'll be, but that's on VFW to include in your cost to the individual purchasing the banner. And then, is council okay with this idea from May through the end of September?
September.
Yeah, yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
And then, once we have a better handle on the poles, all that, then we'll share that with you, and...
Again, if more brackets are needed, we would handle the cost of that, if possible.
Clearly, yes. If, if brackets, we're seeing that there might be fifty-plus brackets up that are not being utilized, or would be reutilized, I forget how that works.
Well, we have, what'd you say, fifty-seven, and we utilize twelve of them right now.
Oh, okay.
And if we wanted to utilize, so the issue is if we want to, for anybody else to be able to use them, or, so, we would have to identify if there's other places we can put brackets.
Right.
So, it might be, I might suggest that this first year, we are doing a, it's not, it's a pilot, right? We're, we're, we're starting off and we're gonna say, we're gonna do thirty.
Yeah.
Just as a, just as a number. We're gonna do thirty, we're gonna try it out, see how it goes. If you have a ton of interest and there's a waiting list, then we know that we need to move forward, and then that allows other organizations to be able to utilize the banner program as well. So, if that's okay with everybody, you know, city manager can get back to you and work out those details, but I don't think any...
Are you trying to set a formal ceiling this year, then?
I'm just saying that that might be a good way to approach this, the first year is to have a, say...
Well, this season would be next year, anyway.
Right.
Right, right.
We would have to have something, so we would know where to cut off applications.
Exactly, right.
So...
Okay, Randy, is that reasonable to come up with a, a number, then, based on what we currently understand and/or reach out to utility companies?
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, guys, we will get back to you on that as soon as we can. Sometimes communication is a little slow, but we will give you a number and, and any additional costs that you need to include in your price.
And that fifty-dollar charge, if this, back to a question I had earlier, if this is approved, we go through with it, we want to make it a yearly thing, is it something we have to come up here every year and have approved, or can we put it through as a yearly?
I would think, let's make, let's make that decision after this pilot run.
Right, after the first year, right.
So, just get through that and just see where everything is netting out.
All right.
Just to be clear...
Is there any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, questions, the VFW is going to handle the applications and the, and the making of the banners.
Well, we'll hand...
Storage of the banners.
If the, if the person that bought it does not want to, hold on to it.
Okay.
It's up to them.
I was hoping the city would handle it.
The city is not gonna handle it.
No.
No, we, we are not.
The city's not gonna, and, and doesn't have a...
Doesn't do.
I know, I'm saying the city is not going to, but we're really happy to help you get this going.
But, we will handle it if needed.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does that, I, I wasn't sure, does that answer your...
Yeah, and it's not open...
As far as producing...
Look, my dad was a member of the Chester VFW, so, but I could, I could purchase one of these signs and have it hung here.
Exactly, right.
Sure.
And like I said, we're, with Provision Impressions out of Painesville, they will be the one producing the banners.
Great.
So...
How are you, have you given any thought to, let's say a banner goes up, and we have a tremendous windstorm and a banner or two gets ripped, what's gonna happen?
On other applications from other cities, they do have a line in there stating that the city slash VFW is not responsible for any banners being destroyed or defaced or whatever.
So, someone...
They would have to purchase another one if they wanted it put back up.
Okay.
Yes.
And we'll make sure we put something to that effect in our application form.
Yes.
And that can be worked out, excuse me, worked out.
Getting me choked up, I guess.
Sorry about that. We can take it down and then just give it back to you guys and say, hey, please contact...
Exactly, right.
The only thing I would ask is that, and I say this on any banners that go up anywhere, that somebody keeps an eye on the condition, 'cause I think nothing looks worse...
Oh, yeah.
...on banners that are put up, for whatever reason.
Yep, just like a flag.
That are, that are looking worn, frayed, it just...
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Thank you for your service.
Anything else?
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
It's, uh, we're grateful that you gave us your time. One side note, we did already bring up the breakfast, they do start the first Sunday of February and run through Easter.
Favorite time.
Every Sunday morning from eight to noon.
You're all welcome.
You may have to wait a little bit for your food, but it's fresh. You want it fast, you gotta make down.
Thank you, guys.
I'm there, I love there.
Thanks again, gentlemen and ladies from the VFW. Okay, moving on to hearing from the general public, is there anyone here in attendance tonight that wants to address city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, no old business, new business. We do have one item of discussion, a letter of support for, NOPAC that I want Ben to review with us, where we've made progress on that.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received from NOPAC a request that the city council and the city manager craft a letter in support of NOPAC and, with respect to a, a pending show cause order before the Public Utility Commissions of Ohio. NOPAC is a valued partner with the city for a long period of time, and they do a lot of good work to help keep energy rates low, and generally, they're, they do, they do a good job. There's some allegations with respect to an enforcement action that the Public Utilities Commission has made, suggesting that NOPAC's decision to return certain, a certain number of its customers to the standard service offer, offer before the end of the aggregation period, is inappropriate and might compromise NOPAC's licensure. Those are a lot of words that I don't necessarily fully understand, and I continue to attempt to understand, but we do want to reserve the right to support our, our valued partner in aggregation. So, with the authorization of the city, assuming we complete our investigation, we believe it's appropriate, we would like the authority to craft a letter in support of NOPAC with the city manager signing it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Very good.
And we have a, a deadline, timeline, are we within reach of what the anticipated response from us is?
Yes, I believe we can, we, we can accomplish it within that timeframe.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ben? Right, thanks, Ben. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, legislation, legislation A, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to utilize State of Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program Services and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second at discussion, call the question.
Mr. LoCo?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Motion carries number, read it, please.
Ordinance number three-two-one-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to utilize State of Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program Services and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number three-two-one-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to utilize State of Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program Services and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for adoption of ordinance number three-two-one-five?
I'll move second.
Moving second, discussion. Paul, Randy, I don't know for sure.
In your packet, there is a memo I drafted, that's just a recap or a review of this program that began in two thousand and fourteen when we were first contacted. It's an opt-in, opt-out, it's at no cost, we've done it every year since the program began, and staff would recommend that council approve legislation to let us continue this.
Where are our bridges?
Woody Brook and Wilson Mills.
Wilson Mills.
It's not a large bridge, is it?
The one on Wilson Mills is actually a culvert.
Culvert.
Yeah.
By the apartments?
Sorry.
By the apartments?
Okay, very good, any other questions for Paul?
Well, no, there's actually... Closer to Hidden Land.
The Woody Brook Bridge is sort of the, there's, there's also an aluminum culvert on Woody Brook as well.
That is correct.
Its span is under, I think its span's under ten feet.
It's holding up beautifully, by the way.
Good, glad to hear it.
Who designed that? I know.
C W Courtney, Kevin. I'll leave it there. No, this is a good program, I mean, we, we recommended this, the same thing in South Euclid, they just passed it at the last council meeting, I, I think most communities are going with it, it's, even though I'm a, in the consulting business, I have to recommend to my clients that this is the way to go. I assume that Doug also recommends it, right?
I agree.
Very good, any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Legislation B, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Company One-Nineteen Limited for property located at one-oh-three South Street, Suite Three, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, read this by title only for the second and third time?
I moved second.
Moved in second at discussion, call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries number, read it, please. Ordinance number three-two-one-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Company One-Nineteen Limited for property located at one-oh-three South Street, Suite Three, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number three-two-one-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Company One-Nineteen Limited for property located at one-oh-three South Street, Suite Three, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number three-two-one-six?
I'll move second.
Moved in second at discussion. Steve?
Yep. Good evening again, yeah, Company One-Nineteen has requested to take over the space where Davis Insurance is currently, he, Mr. Davis is choosing to come out of the lease, and it would vacate the premises. Hasn't been vacated as of today. The ordinance that was in your original packet had a start date of November first, that's going to be changed to, on the lease, to December first. There's some other, there's some other extenuating circumstances with them being, flooring and different things like that, in a timely manner, so, but other than that, they, Company One-Nineteen, obviously, they are a local company here, they started at One-Nineteen Main Street as a computer company, they're now located over on Wilson Mills Road, and this is, I don't know that they're a hundred percent sure what they're going to use this space for yet, but they are, they've always had their eye on this space for years, ever since I've been here, so, when the opportunity arose, they put in interest in leasing it, so.
Steve, did you say November first? They wanted it November first?
Originally, when we had discussed this, it was going to be November first, but it's going to be December first now.
And are they moving?
No, it's just, they're going, they're going to use it as additional space, so there, of space that's on Wilson Mills.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Steve?[1717.13] Okay, any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Call the question.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowco?
Abstain.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Thank you. Legislation item number.
Just as a clarification, I'm abstaining because of my wife's involvement with Company 119.
Cookies?
Yes.
Legislation eleven C, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Kengis Appraisals for property located at 107 South Street, Suite Four, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes. Motion carries number, read it, please.
Ordinance number three-two-one-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Kengis Appraisals for property located at 107 South Street, Suite Four, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number three-two-one-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease with Kengis Appraisals for property located at 107 South Street, Suite Four, City of Chardon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number three-two-one-seven? Moved in second at discussion. Steve?
Good evening. Kengis, they, they've been a long-term tenant, they're in Suite Four, up on the second floor of Old Village Hall. I believe this is at least their third lease with us, so they would like to continue on leasing their space. So we worked, we worked out some details with them, and what you have before you this evening is, like I said, their third lease, so.
Very good. Any further questions for Steve? Please call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We're moving on to agenda item thirteen, executive session, or, I'm sorry, twelve, review of expenditures. Dan?
Yes, on October eighth at nine AM, Councilman Blackley and I reviewed the expenditures. We sent a few questions over to Mark, and they were answered satisfactorily, and everything's in order.
That's what we love to hear. Thank you for your due diligence on that fun event.
We enjoy it.
It is a good kind of way to catch up on things, isn't it? Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, executive session, and we do, in fact, have reason for executive session for the following reasons. To consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, to consider the purchase of public property for a public purpose, or the sale of property at competitive bidding, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body, or the subject of pending or imminent court action. Coming into executive session, I would like to invite Amy Day, Clerk of Council, Randy Sharp, City Manager, Stephen Yaney, Community Development Administrator, Paul Horniak, Director of Public Service, Doug Courtney, City Engineer, Ben Chinaki, Law Director, Mark Isafano, Finance Director. Is there a motion to go into executive session? The move in second, and further discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Thank you. The time is seven forty-three, we are in executive session.